Call the meeting to order. Have our introductory statement here. The Governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the COVID-19 outbreak. The mayor has determined that an in-person meeting of the city council is impossible or impractical without violating the governor's mandates. When an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by Zoom conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary staff will be in the council chambers. This evening, I have Valerie Northrup and Bill Wurger in the chambers with me. The seven council members will not be in the chambers, but will participate via Zoom conferencing. Comments for items that are on the agenda or for the public hearing may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members, or by calling 319-596-0179 during the meeting. The video/audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Meeting minutes will still be kept, and we will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. Have the roll call, Valerie.
Before?
Here.
Bergen?
Here I am.
Drinkow?
Present.
Glazer made notice of his absence due to a prior commitment. Kengas?
Here.
Rothie?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thank you, Val. We will... Item D is the approval of the agenda. Seek a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bowfer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same sign? Motion carries. Item E is the approval of the minutes. Approve the June 15, 2020, regular meeting minutes and the June 22, 2020, study session minutes. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of the June 15, 2020, regular meeting minutes and the June 22, 2020, study session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Rothie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same sign? Hearing none. We move to item F is our guest council person. I'll have Councilwoman Heather Bowfer introduce, and then you can further introduce yourself.
Yes, we have Stacy Johnson. She is a resident Ward Four. Resident Waverly for, a long time resident Waverly, I guess, and works with Kuna Mutual. Right. Stacy?
Yes. And? I've been here for about 32 years. My husband and I, we raised two daughters in Waverly. We now, they're both married. One lives in Colorado and one lives here in Waverly. And we have two grandsons. So keep busy working full-time from my home right now due to COVID-19. I've worked at Kuna Mutual for 31 and a half years.
Excellent.
Thanks for the invitation.
Yes, absolutely. And as you're probably aware, the guest council member has full rights to ask questions, intervene that way, make their opinion known. Just don't have a vote, so...
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item G, which is the Ironman Battalion Day proclamation and photo presentation. So the 133D Infantry Regiment Ironman Battalion Day for July 11, 2020. Whereas service in the Iowa National Guard has been a selfless and noble calling for generations of Iowans dating back to the Civil War, and whereas thousands of northeast Iowa civilian soldiers have volunteered for service at Iowa National Guard Armories in Waterloo, Dubuque, Davenport, Olwine, Iowa City, Iowa Falls, and Charles City. And whereas the 133D Infantry Regiment, a part of the 34th Infantry Division, has continuously operated in northeast Iowa since July 11, 1921. And whereas the 1st Battalion of the 133D Infantry Regiment is proudly known as the Ironman Battalion, a distinction earned during World War II for a record 611 consecutive days in combat, and then reaffirmed during a nearly 22-month mobilization supporting Operation Iraqi Freedom from 2005 to 2007. And whereas the 550-plus members of the Ironman Battalion are readying for a year-long federal deployment to southwest Asia as part of Operation Spartan Shield, with operations expected in 27 Middle Eastern countries. And whereas community support is vital for the long-term success of the Iowa National Guard and for the morale and well-being of Ironman Battalion members and their families at home. Therefore, I, Adam P. Hoffman, Mayor of the City of Waverly and the City Council of the City of Waverly, do hereby designate July 11, 2020, as 1-133D Infantry Regiment Ironman Battalion Day in Waverly in recognition of the vital role of the Ironman Battalion in our national defense. And I do hereby encourage residents to seek out ways to support our northeast Iowa National Guardsmen and their families as they answer their country's call in uniform service in Iowa and across the globe. I seek a motion for approval of this proclamation.
I'll move approval of the proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the same sign? Proclamation is approved. I did receive notice just this evening from a family here in town that there's further deployment expected this fall with this battalion. From at least one individual in Waverly that will be joining this group of soldiers. So it does hit home here that we do have people that are serving from this entire area. I do want to also thank Mayor Rob Green from Cedar Falls for his diligent effort in preparing this proclamation for multiple communities in the Cedar Valley to all unanimously or simultaneously designate July 11 as this day. He also took the initiative to receive the photo and do the graphic designing of the photo that I've purchased or reimbursed him for the expenses of that photo to be on display here at City Hall. And so that's the presentation of that photo, and we'll have the proclamation beside it. This is a reminder of who's out there for us on the front line, so I appreciate that. All right, item H is the public hearing. During the public hearing, individuals may make comments by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, and/or any of the city council members, or by calling 319-596-0179 during the meeting. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the Business 218 North HMA resurfacing 2020 project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate costs. Val, were there any written or oral comments?
No, there were not.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any public comments? And as we wait here just a moment, did the council receive any public comments from any anybody?
Yo.
Okay. I know that the video is a little bit delayed, so I don't want to close this too soon. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for now and seek a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 2099 approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate cost of $929,814 for the Business 218 North HMA resurfacing 2020 project.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kengas. Any council discussion here? Seeing nobody turning green on their highlight. Go ahead and do a roll call vote, Val.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of 5 to 1 with 1 absent, this Resolution 20-99 is approved.
What was the vote?
Not, sorry. 5, 1 to 1 was the public hearing. We didn't actually have an approval on that. I'm confused on my agenda here. It's not the same as what you have. It's a worksheet agenda. Because I didn't have 2099 up above. So the vote was 5, 1 to 1, Mr. Bergen, so, yep. All right, so item 1A is Resolution 20-100. A resolution awarding contract for the Business 218 North HMA resurfacing 2020 project. Seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to move approval, Resolution 2100, awarding contract for Business 218 North HMA resurfacing 2020 project to Hartland Asphalt Inc. of Mason City, Iowa, for the bid amount of $845,725.66.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion?
I should point out, I asked as to why we were only told the identity of the winning contract as opposed to usually if there are more than one competing bids, we get all of the businesses that competed for it. But apparently, because this is a federal bid, this is federal dollars, the process is a little different. So we were only given a summary rather than all the names of all the companies that submitted bids.
Correct. I don't know if James wants to address that for the rest of the council.
Yeah, when we get our own projects in, we do a tally sheet for you to see what everybody bid. We can discuss it. When DOT bids a project, since they're the ones doing the actual process, all we see is the final bid. They don't release the product cost per item or anything of that nature. In fact, there's instructions on that property to shred those documents if you don't approve it tonight. So that's just the way they do it. And again, there's federal money involved. They're the ones bidding it. So it is a different process than normally what we would do, but we have to honor and follow their process. So that is the difference, as Councilman Bergen pointed out. DOT bid this, not us, and they take a little bit, and that's what we see, same as anyone else.
Any other questions, comments, concerns before we vote? All right, Val, go ahead.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
On a vote of 6 to 0 with 1 absent, Resolution 20-100 is approved. All right, on the consent calendar under item I, the following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. One, set the public hearing date for July 20, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall for the construction of New Harlington Cemetery Shop. Item Two, pay request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $24,619.74. Item Three, pay request from Holland Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ballfields 2019 for the amount of $19,789.24. Item Four is a pay request from J.B. Holland for the Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for the amount of $27,514.85. Item Five is a pay request from Liquor Engineering Company for the Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for the amount of $17,384.29. Item Six is a pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the 20th Street Northwest Improvements 2020 for the amount of $6,700... pardon me, $7,641.42. Item Seven is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $10,714.21. Item Eight is a pay request from Wick's Construction Incorporated for the Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Street Southwest Improvements 2020 for the amount of $190,361.91. Item Nine is a pay request from Snyder and Associates for the Traffic Study 2020 for the amount of $11,546.3. Item 10 is a Class E liquor license for Walgreens number 12148. Item 11 is a Class C liquor license for Sasquatch Jack's Hideaway Barroom and Grill. Seek a motion to approve.
I will move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? The consent calendar is approved. Item J, under Regular Business, item number one, Resolution 20-101, a resolution approving a plative survey located at 41 8th Avenue Northwest. Seek a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-101, approving a plative survey to create the proposed parcel Y, parcel Z, and parcel AA located at 41 8th Avenue Northwest for Gary L. Schneider.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Any council discussion here? Hearing none. Roll call, Valerie.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of 6 to 0 with 1 absent, Resolution 20-101 is approved. Item Two, under Regular Business, Resolution 20-101, a resolution approving a plative survey located to the north of the Cedar River Parkway for the City of Waverly.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-102, approving a plative survey to create the proposed parcel U-U out of parcel ID 091120001, parcel ID 091120018, parcel ID 0902452009, and parcel ID 090245202 located to the north of the Cedar River Parkway for the City of Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Any council discussion?
I guess I was just wondering what the purpose is behind putting this all together in one parcel? Does it make more sense from the city's standpoint? Because a meeting or two ago, we rezoned all of this, so that was all zoned in the same, you know, the same zoning. Is that kind of the same purpose of what we're doing in combining all that land in one parcel?
I believe that's the intent. James?
It is. When we rezoned it to one complete zoning standard, now we can combine the multiple parcels into one single parcel to represent the complex as a whole, the park as a whole, instead of having different separate pieces breaking it out. So just cleaning it up, so that again, if it's owned all the same, now we can put it into one parcel to truly be a park. We've had that issue with other items, whether it be different names or different parcels, and so we're trying to clean some of these up that are city-owned property so that they are really consistent, continuous all the way through.
Well, the one issue I had within the description, it said so it would be more desirable for future development. I'm assuming that might be just boilerplate language that's put in these descriptions, and there really isn't any intention. I certainly have no intention to have this be developed in any way other than as ballparks.
That's correct. I think it's just the standard language that you see in there is one of the reasons why you would consolidate everything. But we are not developing anything past the ballparks. I'd like to get that done first before we think about doing something else 20, 40, 50 years from that point. So we have no intention of doing anything past that. I don't know if Bill has any other comments on it, but that is just my understanding, simple boilerplate.
What we did is also removed the parkways right away, because that was actually part of this parcel. So we separated that out of this, so that this is just the description for the entire park.
Okay.
Any other wonderful questions? I appreciate you asking that, Rod, because sometimes we don't understand why we do certain things, and so it's educating for quite a few people sometimes, so... All right, hearing nothing further, roll call, Val.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
On a vote of 6 to 0 with 1 absent, Resolution 20-102 is approved. Moving forward to item Three, Resolution 20-103, a resolution approving the Mid-American Agreement for the removal and then installation of underground power lines on the west side of Business 218 North near the Waverly Municipal Airport Runway 11. Seek a motion, please.
I would move approval of Resolution 20-103, approving the Mid-American Agreement for the removal and installation of underground power lines on the west side of Business 218 North near the Waverly Municipal Airport Runway 11 for $24,536.83.
Second.
Motion by Kengas, second by Bergen. Any discussion?
Does the timing for this have anything to do with the 218 North resurfacing project? Is this just a convenient time to do it, or is there another reason why it's being done at this time?
I think it's just coincidental, where this is the punch list for trying to finish this project out and getting rid of overhead, you know, power lines for, by the airport. Good idea. So we're nearing the end of this, and so this is Mid-American stepping in to bunch us down, and the majority of this, not all of it, will be covered by the FAA.
Okay.
I know I'll feel more comfortable when I go for the fly-in pancake breakfast flights coming in over those if they're gone, so...
Yeah.
It looked like it needed to be done by July 15, as from what it said in the documents, so...
I think that's true. I believe that's true, and...
Right. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, Val.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
On a vote of 6 to 0 with 1 absent, Resolution 20-101 is approved. Item Four is Resolution 20-104, a resolution accepting the citywide asphalt patching spring 2020 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one as the final pay request. Seek a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-104, accepting the citywide asphalt patching spring 2020 project as complete and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $21,870.53 as the final pay request to Kleesner Construction of Farley, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Any discussion?
Well, the number kind of jumps out at me about the additional quantity of, that was in the contract, which was more than the original bid price. What exactly was going on with that?
I'll have Mike jump in and walk you through that, Rod. I know we had some additions we put on that, but Mike, if you would.
So we had an opportunity to do some of this street work with, that coincided with the alley. And at the time, we bid the alley work, we weren't quite sure exactly how much of the street was going to have to be removed and patched. Normally, that would have been a fall project, but given the timing of the alley work, we were able to incorporate it into the spring patching. So you'll see that under the, it's listed here as additional quantity. When we go to accept the downtown alley reconstruction, you'll see that there's an additional expense for the asphalt patch. So this additional work is being funded through the alley project.
So, okay, you kind of lost me there, Mike. The additional work is being funded through the alley project? So who's actually getting paid the $11,105?
The asphalt patch contractor.
Okay. So this, this is different than what the, the group did that reconstructed the alley, because I know they, they built about a half a block of curb and gutter that had been replaced.
That's correct. And that work was completed before we finalized the asphalt patching, so we were able to do it under the spring asphalt patch contract in lieu of the fall. If you go to the very last page on, on this, it gives you the summary of where the expense, where the patch was expensed to. And you'll see that the downtown alley project account was expensed $4,784. There was also about, I think it was $6,900 that was expensed to the sewer lining project, where on 2nd Street Northwest, there was a block each in the sewer where the pipe had actually been... um, a block each in the sewer where the pipe had actually started to collapse and we ended up doing um, a repair on that sewer line, and so the patch work was done, the street patching was done under this contract.
Okay. It, it, it seems like, um, a pretty large additional quantity, u- usually when you have additions to a contract like that, they're fairly minor. That's what jumped out at me, so, um, this was, something was unexpected at that point then.
When, when we do our patch contracts, we, we kind of anticipate that there may be additional utility uh, repair work that's done, uh, or we end up with, you know, this was a situation where, where we were able to, um, incorporate, uh, you know, some repair work as a result of sewer line repair or the curb and gutter replacement, so this, this uh, is very common with asphalt patching, given the time that they're let to, the time that they're completed can be about two-month, um, delay, and so during that time, we, we often have additional work that uh, gets added in.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand this, I'm being a little dense tonight, I apologize for that, but the, um, the asphalt patching was done first and, and then the, uh, you know, nevermind, I guess, I'll go out and take a look at it after the meeting.
Okay.
No, I think you're right on Rod, we had a standard asphalt patch contract we would have normally done, but with the timing of the sewer break, you know, instead of mobilizing back separately, which would have probably caused us more, a smaller quantity brought in, and then doing the alleyway, which we did not count on having to tear out that much street, the timing really set us up to be able to do this all at once under one contract from a few different sources, instead of bringing in three different uh, sets of asphalt to do these type of, uh, projects, so it really turned out to be a timing issue for us. Uh, I think overall, we probably saved a little money by having more quantity come through than doing it in three separate batches. So, I get it's.
The other option, the other option would have been to wait until October.
Well, yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem with you doing it, I guess it would have been nice i- i- for me to at least had a heads up that this was going to be happening since it's such a, you know, I mean, it's a fairly major expense over and above what the original contract was for, and just to have some kind of a heads up that this additional expense is going to be coming up uh, when, when we, uh, came to the final approval of the, of the contract or the payment, um. I don't have a problem that it was done, and I'm sure it was done well, and that, and I, I, you know, if we can take advantage of them working at it and have this project done at the same time, that's fantastic, but, uh, you know, from my point of view, I would have liked to have had a little bit of a, a heads up on it that this was going to be coming up.
Can you remind me where this patching was done and where the sewer break was that was replaced?
So, it was on, um, Second Street Northwest. I'm trying to recall if it was just north of St. Paul's Church.
Okay. There's something here, there was also some work on Eighth Street Southwest that was included on this bid, is that correct? On this contract?
I don't know for sure. I can check.
So, this project will also include the leveling of an area on Eighth Street Southwest in the Waverly Business Park. So, that was also part of this project? That was included in the initial project itself as part of the work that was going to be done separate from the sewer break and the, uh, alleyway, so that was anticipated trying to level out some of the industrial park in the southwest. Okay.
Um, that's, I must apologize, that's a holdover from, I think, last spring. So, we will.
That's actually not part of this.
We, no, we will, we will try to do a better job proofreading.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote Valerie.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty dash one zero four is approved. I'll take just a moment to go back to, um, resolution twenty dash ninety-nine that, that passed. I read incorrectly on my tally here, I don't know why I marked a, a no there, um, Brian, um, drew my attention to it. It was six yes, one absent, there were no, no votes on twenty.
Thank you, I was confused, I was very confused.
Well, that, and that's, I, I appreciate you asking, Val had it documented correctly. That's why I got up and, and wanted to, uh, verify with her, um, that that was the case, so just to set the record straight. All right, moving on to item number five, resolution twenty dash one zero five, a resolution accepting the downtown alley reconstruction twenty twenty project as complete, approving change order number one and approving pay estimate number three as the final pay request. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty dash one oh five, accepting the downtown alley reconstruction twenty twenty project as complete, approving change order number one in the amount of a one thousand six hundred fifteen dollar and ninety cent decrease and approving pay estimate number three in the amount of two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-three cents as the final pay request to Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bowfer, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call Val.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty dash one zero five is approved. Resolution number six, or item six, resolution twenty dash one zero six, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the First Street Northwest Reconstruction twenty twenty-one project. Seek a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty dash one oh six, approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa for the First Street Northwest Reconstruction twenty twenty-one project for the not-to exceed amount of eighty-six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Any discussion?
No, I recall this is one of the projects we talked about in our budgeting, and one of the ideas was to make sure that we could get this completed before the reconstruction of Bremer Avenue Bridge, is my memory serving me correctly? That is correct, so we're doing the engineering this year in anticipation of doing the paving of the project next year. Okay, and, and part of the context was that if we waited until after the bridge was completed, it would be in a state of serious disrepair, and even with the, um, the detours around the bridge, this will probably get a lot of extra use. That is correct, and with the federal money and program for it, we were needing to get this done in the next couple of years. Oh, there is federal money helping us with this? Uh, yes, sir, this is the, uh, swap money, the, uh, Traffic Bureau grant, um. So it's federal aid as well, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project that's assisting in the funding. What did we have to do to be eligible for this particular federal grant, I'm curious? Um, I think there's an application process that we would have went through, and I'm trying to remember, Mike, if this is through the RTA that helps us set this, um. Oh, I had this written down, uh. I'm gonna let you handle this, Mike, but I believe it was through RTA.
That, that's correct, and the RTA is always programming five years ahead. So this is a, a project corridor that was identified, uh, four years ago.
What makes this particular project eligible for federal funds?
It is a minor, classified as a minor arterial roadway in Waverly. Uh, so, um, minor arterials, collector streets, uh, those are eligible for, uh, this type of funding.
Nice.
Is this funding available all the time then? Say, if we say, uh, we don't think that this project is necessary be at this time, that we can, um, apply for it at a later time?
So they are programmed five years out, if we, uh, basically decline the funds at this time, uh, the next opportunity for us to request funding would be for the FY, uh, well, basically, two thousand twenty-six. Um, so, they've just gone through the process, I believe, of programming the FY twenty-five fun, funding, so. Uh, there are six counties, uh, two large communities, Waverly and Independence, uh, and then, uh, all the small communities are pulled, uh, pulled together, so, um, there is probably ten times as many, many projects as there is available funding. So, um, that's, that's how it's distributed, uh, it is uh, not guaranteed, it is, uh, every year, counties and cities request the funding and they go through uh, selection process, and, uh, again, usually there are projects that amount to three to four times the available funding, and so, uh, everyone has to, uh, kind of negotiate and cooperate and, and, um, uh, the last project we did was in twenty sixteen. So, uh, we used to be doing projects annually, but due to, um, you know, um, the federal government and the states being fiscally restrained, uh, we're now averaging one project every three years. So, um, we've got back-to-back projects, uh, Business two eighteen north this year, and then next year, First Street Northwest, and then we have nothing programmed, uh, the next four years after that.
So, I drive down this road and I feel like it's in very good repair right now, um, you know, and I drive down Fourth and I feel like it's been in, um, very poor condition for quite some time. So, um, you know, I, I'm struggling, you know, we let Fourth go quite a long time and we're finally doing it now, we're finishing it now, um, you know, and, and I've, it just feels not right to tear up a road, um, even though eventually it will need it. Um, it feels, doesn't feel right to me to tear up a road that is in very, I feel, very good condition at this point, um, and, and i- if there's some way we could do it down the road. Um, but jeez, we waited forever to do Fourth, um, that probably could have um, used a long time ago, so I guess, um, that's kind of what troubles me a little bit.
You're, you're correct on Fourth Street that, uh, it needed to be done years ago. Uh, it is a state highway, uh, we are doing it in coordination, uh, with DOT funding. Uh, this project, the city, uh, was asked to take the lead and we are doing that because of the substantial amount of utility work. Fourth Street has been delayed because of the work on Bremer Avenue. Uh, otherwise, it would have been done, uh, probably a couple of years ago. Uh, additionally, the Amse Parkway Bridge Repair got delayed because of the work on Bremer Avenue. Our concern with First Street Northwest is that if we postpone it and delay it, the next opportunity to even consider rebuilding it is going to be after the Bremer Avenue Bridge Project. So that would mean it would be five years from now. And I think it's very likely that the condition of First Street would look a lot like the condition of Fourth Street if we had to wait until twenty twenty-five.
And in the summary here, Mike, it says that the Iowa Local Road Evaluation Website has a payment condition identified as poor and very poor. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but that does not sound good to me and having the kind of traffic that we're going to have on that road uh, in about two years, I, it, it seems that this would be a good time to go in and, and, and make some very significant, uh, uh, rebuilding on that street, but it, it, what, what, can you fill me in just a little bit on what that actually means when it says that the condition is identified as poor and very poor?
So they have a mobile testing machine that, um, I think it, um, I'm not sure if it's, um, it, it, I want to say it has like a, a, a laser system on it where it's able to uh, identify defects in the roadway pavement, uh, cracking, the frequency of cracking, the type of cracking, and, uh, from that, um, they're able to uh, run it through an algorithm and then it, it basically scores the condition of your pavement. Uh, this is available online, uh, you just need to search for it, and it's a, um, you, you can look at any, uh, classified street uh, in any community or county across, across the state of Iowa. So it's an interactive, uh, program through the Iowa DOT's website.
Well, there's definitely a difference between destroying productive assets and letting roads go on forever and ever until they're crumbling. And, yeah, I, I gotta agree, there's, there's productive life on this, uh, road left, and, um, so when we're destroying that, we're essentially spending money, in essence.
Well, but I would disagree that there's five years of productive road use on this, I would agree there's probably two or three years, but I think if we wait until it's time to fix this road, it'll be too late to get the federal dollars and all of that money would be coming out of Waverly taxpayers. So.
Call the question.
We have already levied for this, is that correct?
That is correct, the engineering was part of the, uh, bond that just went through, this is talked about extensively in budget as well in the two-year plan that we were looking at, and I guess this discussion would have been good if had then as well, um, instead of the point we're about to announce the engineering on it, so, um, it is part of the levy, so. This first part's the hundred and five thousand to get the engineering done. If the next year the council does not want to do this project, the engineering is still good for years to come, and I guess it can be decided at that point.
Mr. Schneider, did you call the question?
I did, yes.
All right, roll call vote Valerie.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Before?
No.
On a vote of four yes, two no, one absent, resolution twenty dash one zero six is approved. Item number seven is approved to remove the Third Street Southeast Bridge. Seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to remove the Third Street Southeast Bridge.
A second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bowfer.
I guess I just have question of what we're actually voting on here, um. Is, is this the, the way that a motion would normally be made, uh, and wha- what's the, uh, what's the consequence of approving or disapproving this, uh, item?
Well, this comes out of the, uh, discussion of the last meeting, the study session, and the consensus of council, at least the majority was to put an item on to determine the future of this bridge, there's never been an actual vote to remove the bridge taken. This accomplishes that vote and sets up for the next item to get the engineering to construct how to do it. If the vote is to not remove it at this time, then we would sit idle and the council would need to have another discussion as to how do we proceed forward in a different direction, uh, at that point in time, so that's the reason for the, uh, limited amount of, uh, discussion, or at least the print on this. We really hammered it out at the study session, and this is just that, you know, actual vote to get this started, so the next item for engineering to do that process would actually be. you know, actual vote to get this started. So the next item for engineering to do that process would actually be, um, appropriate and formal once a vote has been established. Uh, so that's, that's the logic behind it.
Listen, then I think you get the ball rolling now.
Yes.
Right. And I think Rod did, even if we were to vote to say remove it and go forward with engineering, it could come back to another council not actually then proceed with the actual vote to accept the engineering and fund it, fund the removal.
Sure.
But in many ways, this is just a test vote to see is there a majority will on the council.
Uh, I would say yes to get this moving forward and that's why we have the engineering agreement, the next item after. If council does decide to go forward and reduce this, then that will set the process in motion officially.
If the, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
If the engineering agreement is accepted and paid, does it remain in, in a, uh, viable state? That if we decide, if the council decides not to pass this or passes for a certain period of time?
Um, I'd ask if you could repeat that, ma'am. I, I mean, you were breaking.
Oh, sorry. If you have a quote from the, uh, the people that are doing the estimates and it lasts for a certain period of time. So if the council changes a vote or something, is that like a five-year quote? Is there a one-time deal with that? How, how does that work if they vote differently? After the fact of paying this money to have this review done?
Well, when the engineering is finished, the actual, uh, bidding goes forward. And as we've been through this process quite a few times now. It certainly can be voted to not go forward when the engineering is finished or to wait a year or so. Engineering, when it's done, truly provides a way to do it, then would be the bidding to actually accomplish it. So, again, as in the last item, once the engineering is completed, it can go for some time to, you know, quote, sit on a shelf if you decide to do that.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
But you are correct. You could wait and be bid later. And there are times when a slight update would have to be done.
Okay.
Certain amount of time.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Ready to go and just sit some waits.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
I think it's important to note, and I know that this has been discussed before, that tonight's vote of, tonight's vote, this vote, and then the subsequent one behind it, if this one passes, is to, would be to move forward with quite a lengthy process of the engineering. It involves the DNR and a lot of regulatory, um, stuff, if you may, to get us to the point to actually be able to do something with a removal. Is that not correct? Okay.
Including food permitting from the Army Corps of Engineers, the hazard mitigation process. Uh, it is a nine-month, two-year process to start and this is the pulling the linchpin to get this moving, I guess.
Okay.
I just want to comment that I've been trying to decide how I was going to vote on this issue. I have a hard time forfeiting permanently a million dollars in grant money. And I also wonder what we're moving forward to. I would feel more comfortable, I think, uh, demolishing the bridge or paying for it to be demolished if we knew where we were headed after this. Um, and I, I do want to have some sort of resolution to this, but I'm not sure this gets us to a, a point of resolution. Um, and I also, I do think we need some sort of bridge there. And having been through whiplash with this project for the last however many years, um, we could go back and forth a few more times, which, which, uh, I don't think is in the city's best interest. But so I, I've been struggling to decide how to vote on this. Um, and in part because I keep hearing from people, um, who want, uh, a bridge that vehicles can go on, on this stretch. And so, um, I'm having a hard time voting for this in a vacuum in the absence of any sort of coherent plan going forward.
I, um, I hear what you're saying, Ann. Um, I, it says voice vote. I don't know if we should do like a roll call, roll call vote on this instead. Um, but you know, I do want to see some type of plan, um, beyond this. However, I feel like this million dollars, um, people want this million dollars for this two-lane. And I feel like that has been holding us back to move forward for a very long time. The fight of what type of bridge needs to be go there. So I feel like this is going to help us move forward. I feel like most of the council members are all for some type of passage between, um, this. And I feel like if we don't do something and move forward, we're not gonna. So I, I really, um, I, I see where you're coming from, Ann. I, I have that, that worry too. But I feel like, um, we need to move forward with something. We don't, you know, we've all said, okay, voted not to take that million dollars. Let's continue to move forward versus being held back by this million dollars. Um, that only comes with a two-lane bridge that maybe, um, is not necessarily, is necessary at this time. So I, I feel like it's holding us back.
I agree too. This is, this has been, this is a political vacuum that'll continue to, to, uh, well, I don't want to use the word. It'll continue to vacuum for years if we don't, uh, just get this done. And, um, and if we, we vote to, um, to, to remove this, um, and there is that desire to get the bridge, then, then this, this will be the fire to get that done. And if it doesn't get done, then I, I suppose it's not meant to be. But, uh, there, there are some flood mitigation benefits and we, we cannot, continue to, to let that bridge sit there. And, and it's really a neglect in the neighborhood.
I mean, I would agree with you, Ann, that this vote may end up costing us a million dollars in the long run. Um, but I think that in its current state, it's a liability issue. It's a, a safety issue. And while I would much rather see a two-lane bridge in there, um, I don't know if there's going to be a bicycle bridge or a one-lane traffic bridge or what's going to be in there. But I think that in the short term, it's not going to be a two-lane bridge, which means we might as well remove what's there. And you're right, it'll, it may end up costing us a million dollars in the long run. It may just, in the long run, turn out to be a poor choice. But I think that, um, I think the people of Waverly want resolution to this bridge if nothing else.
Yeah, I, I don't think that the million dollars is the total selling point for me. And I'm not sure that we have been held hostage as a city by that. I think it's been difficult for people to make a decision. Um, and I think what bothers me is I worry about evacuation, that section of town. If there's flooding, I worry about isolation. I worry about emergency response times on, on either side of the river when the Bremer Avenue Bridge is gone. Um, and I worry about the, the life of the downtown. And so I think that, you know, we talked earlier about whether to pass up federal funding for First Street, uh, Northwest and decided not to, right? So I think there's, there's all sorts of decisions you make pro and con about whether to pass up money. And I, I don't think that, that for me and for the citizens who called me about this bridge repeatedly since we took that vote. And, and I've said to them, look, you know, um, there's not a majority right now in the council that, that wants a two-lane bridge there. Um, and so I'm not the one that people ought to be calling probably about that issue. But, so I think I have a number of reasons, but I think it's short-sighted. Um, and, and I, one of my issues is this, this has always felt very piecemeal. And I think it would be nice to have a coherent, multi-step plan of what we're going to do and then do it. Rather than, uh, approving more and more tens of thousands of dollars for engineering, um, without knowing where we're going. And then, uh, perhaps veto whatever plan comes next. So I don't know how many thousands of dollars we've spent on engineering, uh, for this bridge, some of which is now obsolete. Um, but I find that frustrating too. So it's a very frustrating situation and it's been going on for decades. But, um, I just have a hard time, uh, voting for this without a vision of, of where we're going from here. Whether it's one lane, pedestrian only, one lane for vehicles with traffic lights or what. It's, it's a bit of a mess.
I, I hear what you're saying, um, as well. And I certainly want to know what's going on and, and come going forward because I, you know, I am one of those people that want to see something, um, across that river. I really, I really am. Um, eh, but again, I feel like it's just, it really is holding us back. And how long has it been closed? Where we have had no access at all to, um, evacuate already. Uh, so it's been sitting there for how long with no access and no access to downtown? And I feel if we don't get this motion going, if we don't get this moving, um, downtown may suffer because it's still going to be sitting there. Um, you know, nothing versus, um, possibly a one-lane or even a bike lane, bike walkway. So, um, that's, that's my concern is, and, and kind of maybe my rebuttal to that is it's been closed for how long already? Um, and no evacuation area, you know, passageway, no emergency vehicles have even been able to cross it for how long? Or, or, or access down to downtown?
Been closed five and a half years and emergency vehicles were never able to cross it in the history of the bridge because of the railing structures across it in general. So, um, you know, and I guess I don't disagree with what you're saying. We had the study session. The best we have staff come out of that session was there was a majority to want to remove it right away and nothing else. I don't know if there's a quorum to put anything back. I don't know if there's a quorum to put what it is going back. That's what we took the direction from to put this on is to simply move forward as we were directed. But I, I don't have a plan going forward either. You as a council will have to dictate that. If this passes, then I would assume we'll have another study session to talk about what's next after this, or maybe not. Um, we're just kind of gliding along with, with you as a council to determine the best we can how to move forward, uh, with something completely, um, unknown, because I don't know what's going to go in there next either. We don't have that plan. Uh,
So, so if, so if, if nobody, if you all vote against this, then it's literally going to just sit there?
As it has the last five years.
Okay.
It would continue to be there until another vote was taken or another item would come up. Is the council ever missing tonight? So that majority, if it was a three-three tie, would be broken at a future meeting, most likely.
I mean, it.
My, my reason for discussing this is not to criticize cit- city staff for putting it on the agenda. I think I just felt the need to, uh, explain my thought process, uh, you know, because I have received a number of calls from people. And I, I want to let people know that I have heard them. Um, and I think that's important.
Definitely.
With the comments, we're just, this is how we got to where we are. And that's reiterating.
So James, would it be? Go ahead, Matt.
And believe me, I am sensitive to the issue of, uh, emergency response time and, and business on Bremer too. But that's a separate project. That's Bremer Avenue. But when, when we look at that, you know, that, that comes up really in every construction project. I mean, we have, you know, railroad tracks and, you know, obviously those emergency response time concern for bartles. When you have that, we don't make that a big deal. So it's, you know, almost every time you've got a, a major arterial, you're going to have, uh, issues of response time delays. And it, you know, yeah, it, it just doesn't make sense to spend, you know, economic sense to put millions and millions of dollars to have, you know, workarounds for, uh, short-term construction, unfortunately. And it's, um, you know, construction's painful. But if, if we crank up the noise and crank up the promotion and, and, uh, and get loud for the businesses, that's what will make it work. Uh, not a bridge in a neighborhood. I, I'd like to call a question.
I, I guess I would like to second Heather's request for a, a roll call on this.
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask is if that was a request by, um, Ms. Bowfer, but perfect, uh, roll call, vote, go.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of five to one with one absent, this item number seven, the third street bridge is approved. Item number eight is Resolution Twenty dash one zero seven, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal, twenty twenty-one project. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of Resolution Twenty dash one zero seven, approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal, twenty twenty-one project for the not to exceed amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second?
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bowfer. Any discussion?
Well, listen, go ahead, Tim.
I would just note that, um, this wasn't something necessarily put out for a bid or anything. But WHKS has been our bridge inspection firm for a long time. So they are the logical, uh, group to do this process.
They've done all the multiple engineering scenarios of this up to, to now. So if anybody knows this bridge in and out, it's these guys. And I guess I want to give them the satisfaction actually finishing the project on this one. This will be their third attempt to do that, to, along with the council, to get this thing finally done once. So I think it's kind of a marathon for them too. And only fitting they get to be the final, possibly final firm to get something accomplished here. So I agree completely, Tim.
And I'm assuming that on this contract, that they'll be providing a separate breakout for the costs of preserving a portion of the bridge, if that is technically feasible?
Uh, this is just for demolition. When they did the estimates before, it's about another fifty thousand, take crane to move over a span, um, according to what they've done. But in the last, uh, meeting, the study session, it did not seem like there was a consensus to necessarily move a bridge span into the park. That'll have to be another discussion as this engineering goes on. Uh, regardless of what that is, they either pick it up and set it somewhere to be dismantled or set it somewhere else. But, um, that was really not a consensus either. Some don't want to do anything with it. Some council would just soon take a piece of it in the ground, some want a span. It was really kind of all over the board and we did not get a good feel going forward as to what that was going to be, other than the demolition, which is what this is for.
Okay.
We will have the opportunity to discuss that at later date if we choose to preserve a span of it.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to throw in here, kind of piggybacks off the last before the, the question was called, but it applies to this as well. And James can correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, as we, with this, if this, regardless of whether this is approved or not, um, there's still the option in a very short window here to explore what Councilwoman Rothie was referring to as far as the next phase or, or what is going to happen after removal to, um, potentially have some benefit with those federal dollars yet. Um, so I just want to make that clear that if, you know, there is wanting to be a discussion about the future of that space, um, bring it forward. And that can, those discussions can begin happening as early as the next city council meeting. So that some of those things are still on the table.
Uh, if you spend the approximate seventy thousand in engineering, you know, it gets to be a theme. It seems like tonight, yes, engineering can be done. You can set a shelf and it can stay. That's simply not something we want to do though. So please understand that. It's when I talk to you in the budget in general and I harshly criticize you, do not do this unless we're going through with something. And we did it and we didn't go through with it. So here we are again. If we're going to do these projects, we got to go through with this and finish it. We can't keep shelving this engineering. We're at almost a quarter million dollars in engineering for this bridge already for the first two scenarios. This will put in three hundred thousand plus if we go through this route. So we about got it all covered. The only thing we haven't engineered is a two-lane bridge and we were heading down that path. So we've got a trifecta of engineering going. I'm not sure what's left to do except this. And we just need to move forward with something. Or I agree, we're spending money on engineering. WHKS is very happy to do it for us. But even they question, are you sure? Because we've done this twice. Here's a third time. They'll do what we ask them to do, but we got to follow through with some of this. So you're absolutely correct, Mayor. If the engineering gets finished, we'll know how to remove it if we need to. But prior to the actual contract to remove it and do the construction, there in theory could be a vote to stop it. Um, I don't even like to discuss those things because right now we just need to get something finalized and moving forward. So I hope that's a path we continue on at some point.
Right. I mean, we're already paying, um, you know, paying off a debt to that in the amount of fifty-four hundred and eighty-two dollars in this new budget year. Um, paying off the debt of doing these. Paying off the debt of doing these engineering studies and things on this project. So, and that's been six years ago or however long ago that those things were taken on. So, um, no, I'm not entertaining it to promote that. You know, we do need to do, do something, so. Any other discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, Val.
Bergen?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty dash one zero seven is approved. Item number nine is resolution twenty dash one zero eight, approving an updated post issuance compliance policy for the city of Waverly.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty dash one zero eight, approving an updated post issuance compliance policy for the city of Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Kengas. Any discussion on this item?
Uh, if I may briefly, Mayor, um, we, uh, have had post compliant policy since two thousand and eleven roughly, and with all the federal changes and bond issuance and compliance afterwards, we updated and added a bond issuance compliance, um, policy in twenty nineteen. Some of that overlaps and we're wanting to eliminate that from an efficiency standpoint. So we are factoring part of our compliance from the eleven into the twenty nineteen, vice versa. So we have a singular policy now instead of having an overlap of what the compliance would be. So this will continue to evolve. We'll have probably every year, if not every other year, additional changes as the bond markets change, the compliance changes from the feds. And so this is gonna be a continual process, but this is the latest update to get us compliant as well and make sure we don't have overlap in our two policies that may be conflicting.
Excellent. All right, roll call, vote.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty dash one zero eight is approved. Item ten is first reading of ordinance ten seventy-six and ordinance amending chapter thirty-seven, section thirty-seven point two of the Waverly municipal code.
I will approve first reading of ordinance ten seventy-six and ordinance amending chapter thirty-seven, section thirty-seven point two of the Waverly municipal code.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drenkow. Again, this is basically removing the term limit from the airport commission. Any further discussion?
And we talked about this at our last study session, as I recall, so.
You are correct. And it only applies, obviously, because that's the only one that has that term limit language in it of our boards and commissions. All right, hearing no other discussion, roll call, Val.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, the first reading of ordinance ten seventy-six is approved on the first reading again. Item eleven is first reading of ordinance ten seventy-seven and ordinance providing for rezoning of a parcel owned by Robert and Lindy Jewell, located to the west of Horton Road from R four, multiple family residential district to R one, single family residential district and setting a public hearing. Seek a motion, please.
I'll move approval of first reading of ordinance ten seventy-seven, an ordinance providing for rezoning of a parcel owned by Robert and Lindy Jewell located to the west of Horton Road from R four, multiple family residential district to R one, single family residential district and setting July twenty, twenty twenty at seven o'clock PM in the council chambers of city hall as the date, time and place for a public hearing.
So, motion by Drenkow, second by Bergen? Council discussion.
I noticed this is a seven, zero, uh, recommendation from planning and zoning.
That is correct.
Right.
As I'm looking at the zoning map here, it looks like all of the property to the northwest and south is all zoned agricultural.
That is also correct. Yes, they're carving out a piece for residential, assuming to uh, place the property there. Bill may be able to enlighten more if additional questions are to this, but I believe that his reasoning is to simply carve out a residential area from that field.
But it's already residential, it's just one type of residential to a different type of residential.
The lots already created, it's, um, uh, there, uh, between another house lot and then a, a commercial lot. And it was zoned R four before. So it, um, i- i- if it's gonna be developed, it can be developed as an R one residential lot instead. About half it's in the hundred-year floodplain and about half it's in the five-hundred-year floodplain. They can choose to build on it.
My question about it was flood.
They would have to deal with the, uh, the, the flood ordinance, but I believe that they can build in a hundred-year floodplain. Any other discussion on this first reading?
Yes, I was just wondering on, on the, um, the land use, future land use plan, is, is that designated as a residential area or is it, I think it's, if I remember right, it's, it's all designated as agricultural. More than likely, that's probably gonna stay agriculture because it is so, so low in that area.
There's two houses right next to it, uh, Rod. I, I don't know, I, I think it was yellow, I think it was residential actually, because it was already zoned R four.
Okay. Well, I, I just mean, I'm assuming that planning and zoning has a handle on this of, you know, for future land use that, you know, we, we have one spot that's zoned R one and everything around it in the future gets zoned for something else. I'm, I'm assuming that they have a handle that that's not going to happen.
So the parcel that's north of it is an A one zoning now, but I think it's in a, uh, housing, um, future land use plan. Yeah, I mean, to the, to the west of their two homes and to the south, it's really river area. But to the north of it is, is designated as a housing on the future land use plan. Is that helpful, Rod?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to look at my map and.
I can give you a moment.
Well, I think it's the last map in the packet that's all yellow is the future land use is residential. Right, at, at any rate, it's not going to be in the middle of the commercial area, no matter what happens, so.
Even if that property to the north went commercial, it's kind of sandwiched between residential and, and the east-west alignment, I guess you could say. Any other discussion here? Hearing none, roll call, vote, Val.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, the first reading of ordinance ten seventy-seven is approved. Item twelve is the first reading of ordinance ten seventy-eight and ordinance providing for rezoning of a parcel owned by JCLJ Ventures LLC, located on twelfth street northeast from A agricultural district to R one, single family residential district and setting a public hearing.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance ten seventy-eight, an ordinance providing for rezoning of a parcel owned by JCLJ Ventures LLC, located on twelfth street northeast from A agricultural district to R one, single family residential district and setting July twentieth, two thousand and twenty at seven PM in the council chambers of city hall as the date, time and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. I will note on the agenda that identified A hyphen agriculture district in the supporting documents, it is A one currently.
Sorry.
No, you're, you're correct. It, it just didn't have it on the, on our reading, so it wasn't on mine either.
I was reading it, so.
Nope, I just verified, so just so everybody's on the same page. Any further discussion?
I just had a question about this. I noticed that planning and zoning approved it unanimously, but my question was, it's, it's a long, narrow strip of land without any access. And I wondered, does anyone know if this is planned for one residence or multiple? I thought I read something about subdividing and I just wondered how people were planning to get in there if they were gonna put more than one house on that piece of property.
They're projecting that they would have, uh, uh, more than two lots and that there would be one entrance from twelfth street that would have a, a common driveway up to the lots.
So the lots would like be stacked, but one driveway would go through the first lot to get to the back driveway or back lot?
Right, you'd basically have three lots east to, uh, east to west or west to east.
Yeah.
And then you'd have the drive coming in from twelfth, so that would probably pass on the south side.
Gotcha, okay.
And, and feed all those lots.
Okay.
And I think it's only three and maybe four.
It'd be kind of like a private street.
Correct.
Shared driveway.
Shared driveway, probably more than a common street. All right, any other discussion here on this first reading? Hearing none, roll call, Val.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drenkow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, the first reading of ordinance ten seventy-eight is approved. Item thirteen is approval of the mayoral appointment. Seek a motion.
I will move approval of the following mayoral appointment. Don Meyer is reappointed to the historic preservation commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Bofor, any discussion? I'll only offer that I appreciate Don's commitment to historic preservation and some of the things he's done with the walking tour, um, program and a lot of other things, so I, I appreciate his continuance, uh, in this capacity, so.
As the council liaison to historic preservation, he has done a bang up. John would continue to do so.
Thank you for that affirmation. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign? Motion carries. Section K, reports from boards and commissions. Item one is economic development commission minutes from February eleventh of twenty twenty. Item two is historic preservation commission minutes from February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Item three is historic preservation commission minutes from May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty. And item four is planning and zoning commission minutes from May seventh of twenty twenty, all received into the record. Mr. Bronner, staff updates, item L.
I am not sure if we have any updates tonight at all, sir.
Uh, move forward with item or section M, city council comments. Just start with my top left is Mr. Schneider.
Um, I wouldn't like, and, and maybe I put this on, on, on the agenda and I don't know, maybe we can. I'm hearing different councils are doing different things, but I understand the governor still has social distance guidelines um, in effect. And, um, I just wonder if we, uh, are adhering to those guidelines, because I, you know, and I do understand at the beginning, we didn't know what this virus is and, uh, but now we know that it's really not that dangerous. Um, but we're still doing crazy, crazy extreme measures like not having meetings and really bizarre stuff. What the governor's doing, you know, mandating, limiting visits to terminal patients, that's crazy. We've gone bizarre. It's time for us to pull this in and, uh, and, and bring some common sense back. None of us, if none of us are sick, we're not gonna get each other sick. I would like to have council meetings in the council chambers where they belong, not behind a Zoom meeting. Um, this evening, I'm wearing a lavender rose for cancer awareness. My mom joked that she could get COVID, her cancer would kill it. And I think she was right. Life is too short for us to sit behind these Zoom windows. Not hugging. Having to sneak out hospital patients so they can see their grandchildren, so we can be in violation of the governor's guidelines, which make no sense. And I'll wrap it up here and I apologize for getting a little bit unhinged. But it really is bizarre what we're looking at. It is really bizarre. And I've had enough. My mother was a great servant to her community and to people. Her favorite thing to do was to go to Good Samaritan homes and play bingo. I always told my mom, boy, that's, I, I thought it was incredibly boring. Because I, I do really colorful things and, and it's, but now I look at what she was providing. My mom is the strongest person I know. And I could go on and on about my mom, uh, but she would get mad. Uh, she was also very humble, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schneider. Um, next up, I've got Heather, Mr. Bof- or Mrs. Bofor, sorry.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of things, um, to say. First of all, um, thank you, Matthew, for your diligence and being here today. You know, I think we all would have understood if you were not able to be here today, so thank you.
Thank you, Heather. If that, my, my mom, my mom actually wouldn't, she would get mad if I missed, so.
Um, anyway, also I want to say, uh, just comment, um, that I appreciate the detailed information um, that we do get from staff. Um, so that is very much appreciated. Um, and I also just want to say, um, our council members, uh, are very, um, they have a lot of attention to detail. So I really appreciate our council members digging in deep to the information that the staff has been giving to us um, and asking those questions. Um, they are very helpful for me, I know. Um, and helpful for citizens that are listening and then, and it's helpful um, for me to relay some of this information and, and explain things um, to citizens that maybe don't understand. So I really appreciate the staff and the council and all their questions and, and being so detailed. I, I also want to make a statement. Um, and I'm sorry if I'm choppy, my internet's not so good tonight. Um, but I'm gonna make a, a statement here. Um, I want to take a moment to reflect on the last study session that we had. It was brought up that our strategic plan from almost two years ago included a task force, uh, for, uh, to, to create a task force for diversity. I believe a task force is long overdue and needed now more than ever. As a city, we need to take action as soon as possible and with deepest thought. I have to admit that. I have to admit that I only had one eye open to the variety of human inequities there are in our community. However, due to the recent events in our nation, our state, and in our own community, I now have both eyes. I know now there is a difference between equality and equity. I see now that our community is not perfect, nor will it ever be. But we can always seek to do better. I'm going to challenge myself and our community to do better. Stop denying these things exist in our community. Stop pretending this is the perfect little city. You can start by speaking up against racism, bullying, prejudice, and biases. Admit the limitations of your own knowledge and do not be afraid to ask questions. Finally, I want to challenge everyone to educate themselves and be open minded when it comes to diversity, equity, inclusion. And no longer turn your back or look the other way. I entrust that Mayor Hoffman will address um this by acting upon my request to him to form a task force that I'm willing to devote my time to with an open mind as a council liaison. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Ms. Will Flores on mute there, sorry. Um, next over is Mr. Drinkow.
Well, I I would just take a moment here to remind everyone that we are in a public health crisis. And uh the best way out of this is to follow the instructions that our health professionals are telling us, which is to be social distancing and to wear masks, wash your hands, and you know, we'll all get through this sooner rather than later if we follow those directions. So that's all I have to say tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rothie, you're up next.
Okay, um, I appreciate uh Matt's comments about his mom. I read her obituary and uh you have to appreciate bingo volunteers at nursing homes, and I don't think it's as dull as you might expect, Matthews. Um, you might want to check it out sometime once the social quarantining is done, but your mother certainly sounded like a giver. Um, and you're probably right, she would have wanted you here at the meeting um doing your service. Uh I I appreciate Heather's comments on the task force. I agree. I think that um it's time that we take this issue seriously. Um, the last few Sunday afternoons, I've been holding my sign down on Green Avenue in the heat. Thank heaven for big trees. Um, but if you watch people go by, and we get a lot of friendly waves and honking, but we get some people who give us the middle finger or who yell things. Um, and I think the incident at the recent baseball game um is enough for us to know that even though racism in the north or in towns like Waverly sometimes is subtle, sometimes it can be blatant, and it's unacceptable. Um, and we need to be a welcoming and a friendly community. I think Tasha gave us some really good insights uh when she was here on what it's like to live in a community where um you don't look like anybody else and and you're not always treated like the majority. And so I agree with Heather, we need to keep our eyes open and learn and listen to each other. I thought the newspaper coverage of the conversation between the two Stephenses was excellent, and that's how that's how bridges are built and gaps are narrowed is by knowing people of color and talking to them and and most of all, listening um to their experiences. And so we have a lot to learn, and and I hope we're planning to move forward quickly with a commission about diversity and inclusion. Um I agree also with Rod that we are in a public health crisis and and in some ways it is bizarre. We're getting a lot of mixed messages from people, and I think that's very confusing. Um, I know it's confusing for the patients that I counsel every day. It's confusing for um you know, people I know in social settings, and if you listen to physicians, if you listen to scientists, I think scientists, the message has been pretty clear. It's really hard to cope with a pandemic when it's not really on your doorstep. It's not at your house. But certainly I have colleagues in other cities who are admitting these patients every day, and they are, they do not live that far away from us. And I think it's really important for people as people are are vacationing and leaving our cocoon here in in northeast Iowa. They're going out of state, and it's really important to think carefully about where you're going and how you're going to behave when you're there, and whether you're going to wear a mask and social distance, because um it is a dangerous virus. But but as Matt said, I think if you're, it's it's a very difficult decision to decide whether to have visitors come into a hospital when you don't know where people have been, and whether they could be spreading the virus unknowingly. And so just heart wrenching decisions that healthcare facilities have to make about letting family in, especially when people are are dying. So it's just a very difficult situation, but we do know that that hand washing masks do help. Um and and so I would encourage people to to use those practices. Uh just a comment about fireworks. Um, I want to thank people who've contacted me, and I know that many of the emails we got were to the whole council. We are going to be discussing this issue at our study session at the end of this month. And so um hopefully people will listen in and we'll have worthwhile discussion about the pros and cons of of fireworks here in town. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bergen?
Um, well, I may repeat things that other people said, but I kind of put my thoughts down. So on June 27th, at a Waverly Shaw Rock High School baseball game against Charles City, a WSR fan used a racial insult to correct an opposing player. As a result, the reputation of Waverly is being maligned national level. It is imperative that we as a community take steps to address this incident and make sure that it never happens again. Somehow, this fan was taught that racist behavior was acceptable. Maybe in the past, these comments were laughed off or ignored, but this time we need to send a clear message that the Waverly community has no place for racist ideas or actions. I have been attending the Black Lives Matter demonstrations in Waverly that have been taking place for the last few Sundays to send a message that racism is unacceptable and continues to be a problem even in Waverly. Many cars drove past the demonstration with angry shouts and one fingered salutes. At the same time, we have housing developments in Waverly where the original abstracts stated they could not be sold to people of various racial groups, a practice known as redlining. We should not pretend that there are no racial problems in Waverly. There have been discussions to create an ad hoc committee by the city on what actions we can take to identify and heal the problems that exist. The national coverage we will will receive from this racial incident will not help our local economy or encourage families to settle in Waverly. Race relations is not a problem which our white community can ignore and think will be unaffected by. I would like to encourage everyone to be open to speaking out and listen and learning about the ways racism impacts the lives of our Waverly neighbors. And we need to be better prepared for the next time such an incident occurs. If this happens again, would the fan be ejected? Would all the fans be asked to leave? Would the game be forfeited? This needs to be part of our planning, so we can take decisive action in the face of racial violence against underrepresented groups in our communities, rather than end up looking foolish in the national media reporting. To that end, I have to ask, does the city have a policy for what we will do in the case that a Waverly city employee is filmed using racial epithets or engaging in other racially insensitive acts? Are we prepared to take the actions necessary to emphasize the fact that racism will not be accepted or ignored in any form? So what exactly is the city policy and planning in this regard?
Mr. Bronner, do you want to address that now or get back to Mr. Bergen or?
I lost the last piece of it. I heard, what is the city? And it skipped out on me.
It did a little bit.
What is the city's policy for what we will do in the case the Waverly city employee is filmed using racial epithets or engaging in other racially insensitive acts? Are we prepared to take actions necessary to emphasize racism will not be accepted or ignored in any form? Or specifically, what exactly is the city policy and planning in this regard?
Yeah, we have an employee handbook that would address that. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that to you. It's out publicly available. Um, it's not tolerated. Uh HR has that listed as well. And if anything like that happened, they would be disciplined to the extent that we could, if not further. So um yeah, we do have it covered in a employee handbook as well as a number of other things that are simply not acceptable from uh city employees.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. Mayor Protem, Mr. Kengas.
Lot, lot to follow up on, a lot of things I was gonna touch on too. Uh first, I wanted to express my condolences to Matt and his family.
Thank you, Tim.
On a slightly different topic, just kind of an odd question. Mic is still on. Um, maybe address the closure on Fourth Street. Kind of closed it, didn't really close it. I I've been by there a number of times over the last several days since it was closed and seen a number of cars that just drive past the road road closed sign and come in through the Napa parking lot and out through the Burger King lot and just keep going and kind of skip around. And I don't know that that's really the intent of that. I think it was intended to leave it open so people could get into Napa and Burger King, but it just seems to be being used as a pass through and um wonder if there's anything that could be rectified with that.
Uh, you are correct. Uh, we've observed the same behavior. Uh, this is the stage two construction. It should last about two weeks, and then uh this section uh on the south end will be paved and and open so that you'll be able to access Burger King and Napa from the south. Uh, at that time, I don't think you're going to have any cut through traffic, so. We too are, if 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 someone has an idea, we're we're willing to listen. But we could hope that uh people would do the right thing and take an alternate route to not use a business's parking lot as a shortcut.
Thank you. The last bit kind of ties in a lot of what's been going on in the last last bit. I thought last month, Tasha spoke tremendously on her experiences and experiences that people have in Waverly. And what Waverly needs to do and must do to be better. Um, I agree with Heather's call that we need to take some more action. Uh, the Embrace Group was a great idea. It's 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 moved forward with some some programming, some some options as far as trying to to highlight some of that diversity, but we need to look beyond more just highlighting the diversity, but looking at some of the underlying things that are happening within the community that we need to address, we need to deal with. Um I didn't speak up at that time because I thought she spoke very eloquently, and I didn't want to try to step on her words or anything and muddle it and probably muddling it up a little bit now. Um when I found out last week about what happened at the baseball game, I was sick, disgusted. As Brian says, it reflects on the entire community. Uh, it's not just a school district thing. It's a community thing. Um I guess, you know, I understand the need for the investigation to follow procedure and and dot Is and cross Ts and and all the rest, but I I really think there should be a step further than that as far as even suspending the season for the time being until the culprit is willing to either acknowledge what they've done and face the consequences so that the team and the community can move on beyond that. But I think it should be more than just, you know, we're gonna look at it and we're just keep going like nothing else has happened right now. Um as a in Iowa high school uh athletic official, at every sporting event, boys and girls, a sportsmanship statement is read prior to the start of every event. As an official, if I would have heard that from a player during a competition, that that player would have been immediately ejected. If I would have heard that from a fan, I would have stopped the contest until that fan was removed. That is the expectation from both the Iowa High School Athletic Association and Iowa Girls' High School Athletic Union. That's beyond sportsmanship. And I've, my anger this just weekend has been boiling at that. And so I I guess, no, I'm I'm calling for the person to step forward to acknowledge it, to take responsibility for it. If it's an adult, if it's a minor, I don't care. It needs to be acknowledged. And I think the team ought to show some resolve against it. Beyond just saying, we didn't like that, we don't support it. It needs to be a firmer statement. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Kengas. Ms. Johnson, guest counsel. How was your first meeting?
Um, well, I will say this. I was very impressed with everything. I was very impressed with the details that I reviewed before the meeting. Everything was made it much simpler to understand, much simpler to speak to. When I'm, um, if someone's asked me a question, I'm able to speak to a lot more things. I was very impressed with how you all treat each other. It's very important to me, being fair, looking at different sides of things, understanding that there are two sides of everything i- i- in all aspects of life, including work and city council meetings. It's not just one person's way and no one listens. And and through that, over the last year of watching it, I can see the difference, and it's been very very rewarding to watch it, and I was excited to be asked to participate today. And one of the things uh I'll just, I'll add to is I think that Heather's idea of having a task force is a wonderful idea. Um, I think that um as a as a parent, a grandparent, an employee of a company that is very strong in in the beliefs of racial inequality, as well as being a community member, is very important that we help to teach children who perhaps have not had the same blessings as we all have had in teaching them how to act better, how to act right, how to feel right, because it's not, it's not just about saying the right thing. It's about making sure you feel the right thing as well in your heart. And tha- that's a powerful part of this, and I don't think it's about pointing out. I I've, I struggle with the pointing people out thing, and and the reason I have struggled with that is because asking someone to come forward is extremely fearful time right now in our in our world. And and seeing what has happened over the last few weeks, I can understand how saying I made a mistake and and being this serious of a level of a mistake is very scary. And so I I want everybody I I've tried to say a few things to people and just to step back for just a second and 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 try to not understand at all and not not awarding this at all, but I'm just saying to give give a moment to reflect that a lot of things have happened in the last three or four months that we really need to help to teach people. Some people need to be taught how to act, and and it's our job as leaders in our community, in our company, in our families, to to help those people that don't have that same blessing as we do. I just, I really struggle with wanting to call things out, and and not that I don't think there's a right time to do that, but I just really struggle with that being always our, is to point a finger at it. I I, that's just all. Always our, is to point a finger at it. I, I, that's just all, that's my opinion. I think this is wonderful discussion. I have not had the opportunity to talk to people with this many different ideas and it's wonderful. So I've missed, I missed my office. I'm ready to go back. I wish it wasn't gonna take so long, but, uh, I'm excited to be part of this for this month. And so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stacy.
You bet.
I do have a few things here. Um, first off, again, I know I've, um, communicated directly with Councilman Schneider. With condolences on the loss of his mother to his entire family. I wear lavender myself this evening in honor of her. And had mentioned it that yes, fireworks will be on the study session on June, or June, July 27th. So we will have that open discussion. That's not a vote at that time. Doesn't mean that a vote wouldn't be in the future to make changes, but that is discussion item only. Some of my thoughts here, um, I'm gonna start with, you know, kind of a, a reply or a, a response, not a response, but just an interjection from what, uh, Ms. Johnson had offered. And, you know, as far as pointing a finger, I think the one thing that we can do through all this is point the finger that this is wrong.
Yep.
I think that's the fairest.
Yep.
Way to assign blame, assign fault, to identify and point that finger that this is wrong.
Yep.
With that being said. I appreciate the comments and personal accounts from the council and members of the community regarding racism, human equity, diversity and inclusion gaps we have in our society and our community. That bring light to what has unfortunately fallen into the shadows by unintentional complacency or blatant ignorance. I'm concerned with resisting hatred and supporting all community members and visitors regardless of their race, creed, color, ethnicity, national origin, religion, sex, sexual orientation. Gender expression, age, height, weight, physical or mental ability, veteran status, military obligations, socioeconomic status, food insecurity status, or marital status. Since the very passionate Embrace presentation delivered to the city council on June 22nd. I've had the opportunity to again review the city's five year strategic plan in further details and ask questions of city staff to better understand the intentions behind it. One of the outcomes from the August 2018 report that was identified was the need for a task force related to diversity and inclusion. As it relates to job creation and attracting workforce to Waverly. Since this recommendation, there's been no action taken to form a task force committee or commission. The last six weeks have further brought forth the reality of the need for this task force as identified 22 months ago. Therefore, it is my intention to exercise my authority as your mayor to begin the efforts to create a human equity and diversity task force. This will require the drafting of the mission statement for the task force as well as tangible goals to be able to evaluate the progress and the overall effectiveness. The city council policies and procedures regarding such temporary task forces will be adhered to. And I'll be reaching out to individuals to serve on this task force from the entire spectrum of diversity as detailed at the beginning of this statement. If you were called upon for consideration to conserve, to serve, I would appreciate your acceptance of the invitation. This task force may transition with council approval to a permanent city commission. Human equity and diversity can no longer be a mere suggestion or ideology. It is an expectation of mine to address this and the human equity and diversity task force will begin the process to identify opportunities for improvement within our community. You have any comments, questions or concerns regarding this task force? Please reach out to me and I will do my best to address them. I do beg for your patience as we do develop this and get this underway. It is important to me. It will happen. That is my commitment. And I seek the support and, and instigation of this council to help get it to that level.
Wonderful.
One final thing that, that Mike had brought up, uh, regarding the detour on Fourth Street Southwest. Please be courteous. It's, it's Burger King's parking lot. And if you added a bunch of traffic in there, it's gonna tear up their driveway and that's not, not fair to them. So just take the alternate route. You wouldn't want somebody driving across your driveway, uh, a bunch of extra traffic. So, uh, let's be Waverly nice and just take the alternate route for a period of time. So with that, I seek a motion to adjourn. I've got Mr. Kengas for the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Bergen for the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.